Do you want to talk to Nicole now?
Aye.
Nicole, can you hear us?
No, I, I, maybe 2024. Julia, my wife's running for judge, so that's too many, too many. Too many things going.
Do you know you're going to be chairing the next?
Month and a half. Yeah, this is my eight, this is, I only have two months left.
That's fine.
I, I'm, I think you're, uh, you're two. Right? I think so.
I'm hoping to see you do school.
Or, or, I don't, well, I, I, I'm, I could be mistaken, didn't.
No, you're right.
Yeah, yeah. Unless Bob's still in it. Hi, Bob. Bobby, keeping up with those leaves? Are you keeping up your leaves?
I have deputy and Amanda. You know Amanda Thompson, Debbie Stewart? I have them doing my own side of the state. I stopped doing it because of problems.
Great, how are you? Love the hat.
Problem is this time until I get home, it starts.
It starts. Well, who do we have? Who are we missing?
We got a quorum. We've got a quorum. We were expecting Alan and Sharon. Bill Burnett will not be with us today. The others are expected.
Yes.
How are you?
Fred Midland.
Like everybody else.
My stock answer is usually good enough.
Correct. That you just answered honest. Great. Not really. This whole, this Act 65. When's this going to go away? So it's going to be an update?
Not fair.
When's it going to go away?
It'll never go away.
For me, because I only have two more maybes, so that's a short thing.
Can we make it a footnote?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll make it a footnote for the next.
What's that?
Yeah, we can make it a footnote. Something you just have to remember to do it. If somebody wants to add something. Otherwise, theoretically, whatever you decide is not valid.
Same here, from there. Boy, I'd be French.
Nicole writes me a message. What are we waiting for?
She's wondering what we're waiting for?
Oh, if you want to start, Brian, go ahead.
All right. We will begin the planning commission meeting for November 7th. Call the meeting to order. Are there any things on the agenda that is not mentioned? All right. Then let's go to item two on the agenda, the approval of minutes. If we can have a motion, if the minutes are, if they're accurate, if we can have a motion to approve.
I will make a motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Third item is public comments. So do we have anyone in the audience or on Zoom that wanted to have, have, bring anything to our attention that's not on the agenda? Okay, doesn't look like it, so that takes us to item number four. And that is the request for changes to zoning regulations for the Toftree Resort redevelopment. So Alex, do you want to tee us up on that?
I'm going to introduce you to Leslie Warner, our new planner, and she will do that.
Very good, Leslie.
Hello, everyone. I am obviously new and I'd like to make sure that all of the puzzle pieces fit and that everybody understands how everything fits into the equation. So before I start with what's being requested from Toftrees, I want to take a step back. And I'm so sorry. I want to take a step back and talk about the fact that Patent Township has a planned community ordinance. It's Article 4 in the zoning section. And in that ordinance, it outlines and defines how a community can come about in a sort of create your own adventure type of situation. So decades ago, Toftrees was one of these planned communities. And so instead of having a zoning designation like R1 or such as something yellow in the zoning map that's behind you, it's blue and their zoning designation is planned community. Which means that in this, in the zoning section, there's actually an ordinance that's specific to Toftrees. And that is the ordinance that's in your agenda packet that you're being asked to amend. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you for the history.
So in addition to the ordinance, Toftrees has a master plan that's in place that you guys referenced in February when you were talking about the, I think it was Mount Nittany coming into Toftrees West. And I think Doug refers to it as a bubble map. Is that right? Is that how you refer to it?
I believe I did.
So by amending this ordinance, Toftrees will be required to resubmit a master plan before any future development can occur. So I just want everybody to understand how that works. So moving on to item one, the request to increase the building height for the Toftrees Resort. The current building height in the ordinance is set at 50 feet. The request was to amend that to be 75 feet. So I did some research and I have three different resort hotels listed in the agenda that outline, that all three of them essentially are around 100 or greater in feet. They are historic hotels, so that's a slightly different component, but they all feature a similar site to the Toftree situation. It's an open space with a golf course and they, the building itself is the future building. And that helps to maximize view sheds, anchor the landscape, do all of those things. So I don't think the request to increase the ordinance from 50 feet to 75 feet is specifically, is going to cause any issues in the long run. But there are multiple ways that this can be incorporated in the Toftrees ordinance. So for Skytop specifically, they have a historic overlay. That's how they've incorporated it. Shawnee on the Delaware, they are exempt because they're a historic building. But Smithfield Township specifically in the Pocados has a lot of resort hotels that are vacant or abandoned and they're really trying to redevelop them. So there's some, some situations in play trying to get developers to come in and really utilize those sites that have been abandoned for multiple years. And then Bedford Springs, this, there's no height restrictions in the township for their, for their buildings. Unless it's associated with the airport and that's not the situation. So with that said, keeping the language very simple, if you go to the ordinance that's attached to your agenda packet, it's called the area bulk, open space and parking requirements for the Toftrees Planned Community. On page four, what staff is recommending is simply adding a line item of language. For non-residential or mixed use outside of town center, so long as no portion of the building exceeds 50 feet in height, is within 150 feet of any property line. And that max would be set at 75 feet. So essentially, the building can, cannot exceed 50 feet, within 150 feet of the property line. Does that make sense? But it can be higher if the property line would allow it. So we're talking properties that would be larger in scale. And then this would be applicable to the entire Toftrees Planned Community and it would not be specific to any parcel. In addition to this, I just want you guys to be aware that building height is defined slightly differently in, when you're talking about an ordinance. So for the zoning section, the building height, I'm going to read it here. It is defined as the vertical distance measured from the average level of finished grade along all exterior walls of a building to the mean height between the eaves and ridges in the case of a pitched roof, otherwise the highest point of the roof.
Says ridge.
I'm sorry?
Mean height between the eaves and ridge.
Right.
Not ridges, ridge.
Ridge, my apologies.
Well, it makes a difference to me.
I apologize. I put an S on there and you are correct. I need to take the S off. So the point, the point of that discussion though, is just to point out that it's not from the finished grade to the highest point of the roof. So this language would allow that 75 feet to be the difference. So there could be a portion of the building that would exceed 75 feet. So that's a lot of information, so I'll let you, do you guys have questions?
Dropping back to the previous meeting where it was weighted average.
Right.
Where else has that been used in Patent Township?
It's used on every multi-story building, basically that has varying ground level around it. So usually doesn't come into play unless somebody's really pushing the, the limit, trying to get close to the 75 or the 50 or whatever it is, 50 or 60, whatever it is. But it essentially applies to every building.
No questions. I appreciate the details.
Absolutely. Anybody else have anything to add about that?
Any other questions? Anybody have, any questions from anybody online?
I have one other question. Non-residential or mixed use. Would the new resort or whatever be considered mixed use or just non-residential?
It's non-residential. Mixed use is a mix of residential and non-residential uses.
Okay, then why? If the request to go to 75 feet was just for the resort only at the golf course, why throw in mixed use?
Well, we can restrict it if you'd like. I mean, that's part of the point of the discussion.
I, well, so it allows other properties within Toftrees to also take advantage of this and that it's not specific to one particular property. You can do it that way if you, if you want. That's why we're having this discussion.
We had talked at the last meeting, thrown out ideas about maybe tying it to the fact that they had a golf course. If this, what staff has come up here is not tied to a golf course, but tied to specific non-residential or mixed use buildings outside the top town center that are on larger lots. That's where the, except, or the large setback for the higher part is going to mean that they're going to have to be on a larger lot. So Carnegie House wouldn't be eligible for something like this or the L House, they wouldn't be able to do anything.
Is, was it your intent to be able to draft something that could be used in the future for other? It was, was that your reasoning for putting non-residential in here?
Well, the non-residential is what would apply in the mixed use. They're not, the resort is not a mixed use.
Correct, so I, I'm asking, was mixed use inserted with the intention to be able to use that again for other future purposes beyond this property?
Potentially. So we were continuing with the language to keep it simple. So if you notice the line item prior to that is non-residential or mixed use outside town center.
Yeah.
So that would be the location where the Toftrees Resort would be. That's the language we used so that we could replicate it. So that it was not site specific. You're not singling out a parcel and changing an ordinance to that specific parcel.
I see throwing in mixed use as a potential to haunt you later on in the rest of Toftrees West. Where they would possibly want to go in and build 75 foot high in other areas instead of 50?
Well, so Toftrees West, and this goes back to how this is applied to the master plan. A lot of Toftrees West is a combination of town center, which is a different height category. You look at two lines above where the proposed is. And residential and open space. So I would actually have to defer to is that even feasible in Toftrees West? Is that something that you would be able to utilize? If the ordinance was worded as such?
It's Bob Poole. The answer is yes. I think what it does give you, I'm not saying it would happen, but it does give you flexibility in the future. If something were to occur similar to what we're talking about, it might be a good thing to be able to do. Once you, every time you restrict something to the strictest restriction, then you're in, you know, you, you leave out that opportunity to create something that might be there. But it's possible. So the answer would be on Toftrees West is that there, there really is only a couple places we could do it because a lot of, a lot of it is residential or multifamily. But there's a, there's a couple areas where you could potentially do that. But actually, I think it was, I didn't even think it happened. I think Leslie actually had a good idea. And not just because I'm a developer, but I think it's actually not a bad thought to have a mixed use capability in there.
My comment to that would be you could come back later and ask for it then.
That's correct.
So there's a, there's a benefit to having longevity and a timelessness when you're writing ordinances. Not saying that they can't change, but saying that there's definitely some benefit to doing it well the first time around, hence the language. And hence, it's not properties, it's not parcel specific.
You're wanting it not to be parcel specific just to avoid potential litigation, et cetera, down the road?
That would be one reason, yes.
Thoughts, anybody else? Any other concerns other than language? Do you want to proceed? Anything else we should review?
Well, do you have any, do you have any thoughts or amendments to the language that you'd like to see?
For the moment, I would just like to see the mixed use dropped.
The mixed use dropped.
Not included right now. It's not like Mr. Poole has come back and changed master plans before.
That's part of, I mean, part of the idea of the master plan, we did this, is to be able to come back. It's, it's a lot easier to do it now, but you're right. I mean, when you have 700 acres out there, time changes, things change and you should be able to come back and with legitimate request and ask for it. So the, the answer to that is you're correct. To be honest with you, I like Leslie's idea, not, not just because I could do it within the mixed use. I think it's, it's good planning. But you're, you're correct.
And you don't know what's going to happen in 20 years. However long it's going to take to build out Toftrees West, major things could happen before then where it blows half your master plan out of the water.
Based on what you're considering now, does it impede upon anything that would be, that is in the current vision?
No.
And Leslie, is there anything, apart from this parcel, is there, there isn't any other area in Patent Township where this would, where this even fits? Am I accurate?
This ordinance is specific to Toftrees. That's why I gave you guys the history. So this is not for Patent Township. So this is the ordinance only for Toftrees.
Yeah.
The planned community for Toftrees.
Yeah.
And this fire protection fee, are we going to, are we going to touch on that?
Yes, that's, we'll touch, we'll touch on that next.
Okay.
There's a lot, there's a lot of information to go over.
But the one thing is correct is that it's important to know is that the, the Toftrees ordinance is specific to Toftrees. So whatever's done here would not be applicable to any other PC.
Yeah, good point. Okay, so should we talk about what's next?
So the fire protection fee. After discussions. I thought I missed, I thought I missed something. So after some discussions with the Alpha Fire Department, it's not a significant increase from a service perspective to move from 50 to 75 feet. However, they do need to staff two high-rise capability and staff locations. And they also would have additional training and equipment and other needs and such that would be associated with an increased building height. So not to say that they can't handle it, but the discussion was, could there be some way to offset their needs specifically for the future? So.
Hence the 10 grand for five years.
Hence, hence the, yes.
And is that from their perspective, a sufficient amount?
It's very difficult for them to quantify anything.
That's what the manager, that's what the manager recommended we put in the agenda as a starting point.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think that.
That was their number.
No, that was.
Oh, your, your number. Okay.
I think that sounds, I mean, you know, I think we have to help them in some capacity, but, you know, who knows with inflation what that number is in five years and then we can readjust from there. So I'm fine with that personally.
I mean, it's hard for me to know. Truly, I have no idea what it would be, but. All right. Bill's not here, would be.
Yeah, Bill, Bill had talked to me about this. Where the germ of the idea came from.
What's, what's the makeup of the 50,000? Where's, where's, what do they need? The fire department?
Most of their, so the tall buildings are downtown today.
They're experts at that now.
Yeah, well.
And, and in tight.
We have another station here where we'd have to replicate some of the equipment and the manpower that they deploy from downtown. Do you want us to, I, I, I'll go back to him and get an itemized list.
Yeah, because, because they're down, we're talking about 75 feet down there to talk about 120 in tight court. That's a whole different, that's a whole different situation.
So when they, when they had to make these adjustments downtown to upgrade whatever they needed, what did state, what did those developers?
I don't know. I, we didn't have that conversation with the fire.
I don't think they did anything.
I was just trying to put it in perspective.
You know, and, and I guess part of the comments that I would have, as Doug would expect, with the request for 10,000 for five years, is that you remember what we're trying to do here? We're taking a resort right now that's fifth, what, by 50 plus years old. It's somewhat deteriorated. We're looking at creating some, some benefits, what I believe, what this redevelopment would bring to not only Patent Township, but the region. And one of his, and I'll run these down here, environmentally friendly. This will be a LEED certified building. So you take a new facility versus a 50-year-old facility. If the efficiency of the utility use obviously is going to be much greater today than what it was 50 years ago, the insulation, et cetera. We're looking at enhancing the landscape. As you know, the entrance would move down to a much more reasonable place. It's pretty difficult right there, as you know, now to come out of the entrance. Looking to do, and I said last time, a Marriott Autograph Collection Resort and Spa, which will end up being, I believe that we would be doing a destination place for people to visit. So we're going to bring a lot of tourism from out of town to the conferences. I think we'll bring tens of million dollars over, over some time in the town, spending money. And this is dollars from out of town coming into town, spending, which is, which is good dollars. You know, we'll, with that increase in revenues, the hospitality tax, and while the township doesn't receive a direct benefit from the hospitality tax, it does receive an indirect benefit from the tourism in general. We'll be increasing employment by more than 200 jobs. The improved access traffic patterns, and, and you guys approved it, is that we'll, through, through my ask and all, in the Patent Township actually applied for it, but it was a result of ourselves doing it. A one and a half million dollar multimodal transportation fund. When you look at that, it'll be able to enhance the sidewalk, streetlights, paving, widening of Toftrees Avenue, golf cart crossing. Multiple things is going to make a difference at the, at the entrance there when you, when you come off of, while we're going into Toftrees Avenue. And I think the biggest thing is the income tax base. And I did that just to get an idea where we would be. So if we, if we're able to construct this building, because right now it's, it's difficult as far as the times, but the taxes, the taxes would go. We, we had the assessor take a look at it. the taxes, the taxes would go. We, we had the assessor take a look at it. It would go from $93,000 a year to $718,000. These are all approximate, they're very close. So, more than $600,000 a year will be created in, in tax dollars. Now, part of that is, is when you look at, so you look at a five-year 50,000, what you're asking for. In five years, we'll have a net gain of $3 million, over $3 million to the county municipal and school tax, to the municipality itself, patent. The estimate is about $91,000 a year of, or almost $500, $455,000 additional of a new facility versus the current facility that's there. And even though, you know, about 50% of the taxes, as we know, are school taxes, the nice thing about this resort, it doesn't create any students. It's purely commercial. The one thing I, when I, when I spoke to you last time is that when you look at what's happening in the world out there, and I'll relate more to mortgages, house mortgages, because people can comprehend a lot better in commercial, is that cost of materials have gone a little bit crazy, as we all know. Labor shortages are, are all over. It's hard to find. That means labor prices have gone up dramatically. Delivery time, materials is long, and, and the worst thing, and we all notice, is interest rates. So, if you take somebody's mortgage, and when it was a 3%, you go to 7%, it's basically doubled. Well, it hasn't really changed for us either. So, when you look at prime, when prime was down at close to zero, now it's what, 7? Typically, when we, when we do projects, it's 35% equity, 65% debt. You put a 7% debt on the size of number we're talking, are we talking about 50, about $50 million in construction cost? And you can, and so, it, it, it might sound like a small amount, but it adds up very quickly. So, if you, if you look at what we're actually creating, that, I mean, if, if, if the township, the school, and, and the county just gave $5,000 a year, they could easily do it because they're, they're going to get $3 million. And we were, and we really appreciate you guys, you know, the ability to build 75 feet. But also, if, if we couldn't go to the 75 feet, we couldn't do the project. These type of projects really don't work by stretching them out. I explained it to you last time that way. So, I think at the end of the day, we're, we're going to increase the tax base by $3 million, over $3 million, and that's only in five years. We're going to increase patents by over $450,000, and the grant benefit is, is over $2 million. And that's all a result of ourselves. It just seems to me that $50,000 is 10,000 over five years is a, you know, if you, if you gave me that $3 million, I can, I can, I'll give you $100,000 instead of 50. So, I, I think that we're really providing a lot. I mean, one of the things you have to look at, it's always, well, what can the developer give? And it's more of a, and I've said this, in affordable housing, I, you know, all the townships, every township, everybody says, we have to have affordable housing, affordable housing, but no one really wants to give towards it. They always say, okay, but I can't give. I always said, how about if we, how about if all the residents, if we all decide, let's not have a tap fee? You take a sewer tap fee, a water tap fee, building zoning addups, about $20,000. How about if we, an affordable housing, we, we let that exempt, and we, as all residents, just paid three cents more, a quarter for our sewer, whatever. But we're not willing to do that. So, I think that what I'm looking at here is that, I think the project, if we can make this happen, and I'm pretty sure we can, it's going to do a lot for this area, a dramatic amount. Because right now, I don't think we get the destination people coming to Top Trees because of the, the resort itself and the structure of it. So, we're trying to, but I'll tell you, it is extremely, extremely difficult. You're going to see, the first thing that goes into recession is construction, guaranteed. Because if you think about it, everything revolves around whether there be a home building, whether there be a building, that debt service is a killer for most people. Most people in their mortgage borrow a high, a high, a high amount, normally. If it's, if you're paying cash, it doesn't bother you. It's the same with commercial. If we put a 7, right now, it's, it's that high. If we put that kind of debt load on this project, it, it hurts us. So, you know, it's 50,000 here. It's like picking up 100 pennies, you got a dollar. So, it means a lot to us. That's my, and I think everything I, everything I gave you, you can verify and check out. I mean, and I'll tell you, you know, Leslie, you, you did a phenomenal job. And I'm, I'm very serious about that, on your analysis, on, on looking at things and all.
Thanks.
Yeah, you guys, you guys have done very well. I mean, no, I, I looked at it, I said, I don't even have to say anything, and I just have to already give it a $50,000. No, I mean that. I think you did a great job.
Just, the township's share of those property taxes is around $10,000 a year.
Yeah, we had 13 down, they had 13 or something. We were close enough.
I'm looking on the county's website. It says $10,500 for 2022.
Yeah, but it's, I mean, it's close enough.
So, yeah, I mean, Bob is correct. The, the value of the property will grow up at least five times from what it is today. So, it's not quite the number that Bob talked about, but we will see more revenue from property taxes once the site's, once the site's completed. Now, some of those, some of those extra dollars go into providing extra service. Extra activity at the site will create extra need for public services like police, fire, ambulance, and other things. And the municipalities are the only one who fund the fire company costs. So, neither the county nor the school will make any contribution towards, towards those, towards those costs. So, you know, this, this isn't going to sink, this is, this fee isn't going to sink or, or make this thing fly or, or die. Plan commission can make a determination. The manager at least thinks it's bad form to make any significant zoning change without at least asking for something in return. So, hence we're here.
That's okay. Look, and I, I respect Doug for that. What, what, what we are getting is, is that you're getting a project that makes a difference in this township. We showed you the renderings, we showed you the drawings, and, and Doug and I probably disagree a little. I think that if you're getting the kind of benefit I just went through, and if anything I'm wrong on, let me know. I, I think that the township should continue. It's not like it's a, a brand-new project. We have an existing resort up there, and it's over 50 years old. We're looking to take a major, major risk, because we're, we're betting on the fact that we're going to bring people from all over who now want to come back here and, and spend a weekend or whatever at, at, at Top Trees, because it's really an expensive project, and there's a big risk to it. And it's like any of the, Doug said, one thing doesn't break it. It's usually four or five things put together that break, break a deal. And I think right now, interest rates have scared the heck out of us. And so, you know, I guess, I guess the difference, what I'm saying is, is that, and maybe the school, maybe the school should. I mean, if you look at the, that, that, well, I, I know.
Well, they tell you they need more just for what they're doing.
But here's the interesting thing, is that.
I'm not going to lie to you.
No, 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 that's fine. But I'm saying, when you think about this, when I said $3 million, I think our numbers are right. I think if you go, you go back, you're going to find you're right. And let's say half of that is the school. So, in five years, you're going to pick up a million five. If we don't do the project, they're going to pick up zero.
Right.
And, and that's, and that's the difference. The difference is, is that, is that they might not want to help. But remember, not one additional dollar, really, because that, the resort is going to be, people visiting there is not going to be a new student. And so, I, I, I know that they'll probably say, no, if I would, I'd probably rethink it. I'd say, maybe, maybe I would do that. But, you know, but I, I understand what Doug's saying.
Can I take the conversation? Is there any more, any more dialogue on the, the fire?
Well, I, I mean, I mean, you know, to have give and take is great and all that. But I would just like to see more of like a itemized list of, if there's a cost that's going to be incurred, what it's going to be than just having like an arbitrary number. That's, that's my bottom line. You know, I, I mean, I get there's costs occurred. I would just feel more comfortable seeing a list of, this is what it is, this is what it is, this is what it is, than just having someone, you know, locked into a five-year arbitrary number, whatever that number is. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, and Doug, I appreciate your analogy. Typically, when we give, we, we give and we get. Typically.
Sure.
Yeah. But am I, is it, does anyone, when the borough went to, I guess, 12, did they, did, did anyone pitch in for fire services that we're aware of?
Can you answer that?
So, the borough actually was under discussion for doing other things beyond just a fee for improving emergency services. So, we're talking about almost requiring specific code items in the ordinance, which is another discussion entirely. That is sort of the way State College Borough was pushing it. I do not have any specifics. I didn't research that further. I am happy to do so. But that's, that's a much more upfront cost from whoever is developing the site as far as putting in much stronger foundational material, stuff that is truly fire resistant, and putting in specific stairwells, and it's just a whole slew of things.
Well, and it's a bigger issue downtown. Then, can I switch gears? And can we just talk about pedestrian? So, I'm at the new resort, and, you know, the, let's say the patrons want to go to the Ale House. And I think that was mentioned before. So, how are they going to physically get there? Just take the sidewalk that's along Crickle, Cricklewood?
Well, there's, there's no sidewalk currently along Cricklewood, but there's, there's, there are lane lines along Cricklewood that provide for pedestrian bicycle access on the outside part of the roads. So, cars get the inside part of the roads, the bicycles, pedestrians get the outside part of the road on Cricklewood.
I guess what I'm saying is, if we're going to ask for something, then why not ask for something that, that might help the pedestrian flow of things? Because if I'm at that resort and I hear about this great bar called the Ale House that has live entertainment and a really good piano bar, I'm going to want to probably walk there. And so, right now, that would happen along Park, along Crickle, Cricklewood Boulevard, right?
Cricklewood Drive.
Cricklewood, Cricklewood Drive with no sidewalk?
Well, we've had this situation in with people walking on the road for about 20 years now, so it's not new. It's not new. It's not new.
It's not new, but Bob, is there, is there?
We're under a study right now to look at improving that.
Is there a way to do a sidewalk in the back of this resort that takes us in that direction?
Here's a, here's a, I mean, if you, if you're looking for the 50,000, we, we, we have a grant because of us for $2 million, which the township's getting almost $1.6 million of value. Now, it's not approved yet.
Well, it's not.
Well, it's.
Part of that's your driveway, too.
Well, no, but I took that out of it. 400-something thousand dollars. I just counted the, what I counted was the, the sidewalk, the streetlights, the paving, the widening. You know, I, I took out that 2 million, I, because I knew that question would come up, which is fair. But, you know, if it wasn't for us, that multimodal wouldn't exist. And that's 1.6.
If not for us, it'd be harder to get the 2.5 million rocking, too. I mean, it's a partnership, so.
And that's why there shouldn't be the additional. You're exactly right. So, we got, we got one, we got $2 million for the township and ourselves, of which you're getting 1.6. I just seems, it seems to me like, you know, with what we're doing in this partnership and what we're doing, that seems like to be outside the partnership. I mean, we're, we're putting a lot of money into this, and it's another $50,000. And it does, you know, when you look at the scheme thing, someone will say, wow, it's a $60 million project. What's $50,000? Well.
Yeah, well, that's a lot of jobs. There's a lot of people coming here.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
They're at a wedding, and they, you know, they forget this item, so they run out to Target and they buy it, and they forget this. Their kid, you know, whatever. There's a lot of ancillary benefits to the resort, just like a game.
Let's, let's say the resort doesn't go because we can't make it work, then that multimodal law, we don't need.
So, so I, can I just get back to this, this whole, I'm a, I'm a out-of-town person, and I'm here, and I'm going to go to the Ale House to partake in the festivities. And if there's no sidewalk, then how's the lighting on, on Cricklewood?
I couldn't tell you. I think there's some light.
I think there's street lighting there.
Yeah. About the same as it is along Top Trees. There's lights, but I wouldn't call it well lit.
Rather than spend a lot of time, Doug, what are you, what are you looking for?
Well, it's up for many kinds. I mean, if, if, if there was some compromise number in between 0 and 50 that everybody could agree on, maybe that would be.
Well, I think it'd be great if we could just, you know, people out-of-towners go to the Ale House and have a safe way to get there after 5 o'clock, when it's pitch dark.
Talk to him, yeah.
So, Bob, can we have more lights on? Some, somewhere, we've got out-of-town guests coming, and they're going to go to the Cricklewood, or they're going to walk along Cricklewood Boulevard to go to the Ale House. And it, it, because they're not familiar with the area, and it's already, I, I think it's already a little bit dark, is my recollection, but I, I haven't really driven through that. Is there, could we, would you be willing to put in a few more streetlights to illuminate that area?
How much? I don't want to, I don't really, yeah. You got to put a number on them.
I think this conversation is very reactionary versus planning for the future. So.
It is.
I definitely, you know, I'm, I'm, I was uncomfortable with this discussion, I'm going to be honest, especially coming in as a first-time staffer. But my background is, I used to be on a planning commission, and I also was the vice president of a borough. So, I have a little bit of, I have a little bit of experience with this. And I, I think the give-take is completely reasonable, but there's really nothing in the Top Trees ordinance that requires them to do any of this. From a legal perspective, this is, this is just sort of a handshake agreement at this point. So, this is, this is kind of gray, majorly gray area.
Okay, very good.
We're trying to do, we're trying to do a nice project, and, and, you know, I, I think you see the stuff we do, the bank we're going to do, and all, we, we want it to be fair. And if I didn't think that, I would say, the reason why I brought these numbers is to show you how fair I think we're being. I think the, I think the relationship we have with the township is phenomenal. I, I think this is going to be a major, major, major improvement to patent township, not just a small one. You're talking, you're talking about our investment there is large, and I think we're, we're kind of off track with the fire part of it. And I think that, the reason why I'm saying it is, is that I was the one who approached on the multimodal, I can say right now, because it's one of my friends, okay? And, and I like what we're doing. I mean, we're all going to benefit. If, if Top Trees Avenue, what, what's going to be done there can be done, the sidewalk and everything else, that's a huge improvement. Remember, it's not going to happen all at one time. If you're looking to create, you guys have a plan to take Top Trees Avenue, what you want to do. That's a very expensive plan. It's not going to happen overnight. The reason why you have sidewalks in between sidewalks sometimes is because back when it was grandfathered, and you got to wait for that person to come in. Here's an opportunity to get a lot of things corrected at that intersection and really look nice. And that's, that's, I guess that's really my hangup, is I think we're doing, I think we're doing a lot. And I think we're now down the, we're taking a $60 million project, and we're talking about the fire side of it. And I, I'd rather, I'd rather talk about doing the project.
Yeah, okay. I'm, I don't disagree with that. Anyone else on the planning commission want to talk? Good, we got a question. Go ahead, Sharon. Sharon, you're on mute.
Okay, I, I, I kind of agree with both sides. I, I see a solution for the transportation by just having like a golf cart take people who are, you know, shuttle them to wherever they need to go to in that, in that overall development, and that's very inexpensive, and they usually have shuttles at major resorts anyway, getting people safely to, you know, things that are very close by if the weather's bad or if it's dark out. So, I think that's a very cost-effective, inexpensive thing that just happens with operational costs. I think the fire, the money for fire, I think that needs to be, that's because the building is so much larger and so much taller, and so you can understand that there would be, need to be upgrades in equipment. But I, I do think that like a further study needs to be done on that, and numbers need to be a lot more specific. And that can be put aside for future reference, and that we could go ahead and, and move on with approving this based on what those numbers come in at, and. based on what those numbers come in at and having them presented and having an agreement at that point.
Pretty much agree. Yeah, I do too.
I would like to see, because I'm, you know, in my business, we're watching the cost of borrowing money just go up every month. That I would like to see you as the developer to be able to move forward. So it would be nice if we could get that accomplished.
And, you know, worst case scenario is, you know, Alpha says to us, well, you know, we have these big incurred costs. Okay, so then, you know, maybe deal with it down the road, kind of like what Sharon's saying. But I agree with you, Brian. I think with the environment, things are going up, you know, every day that ends in Y. And I think things need to get moving. And I think if this had to be addressed at a future time, it can get addressed and we can discuss it. But, you know, I think based on the fact that with the height, you know, they have to bring the master plan, you know, to have us take a look at it again. I think we need to try to move forward with this in, you know, a responsible fashion. That's just my thoughts.
I, I agree. And I feel like, I feel like we could talk in nauseam about the fire, a credit for the fire department. But at the end of the day, the town, the, the plan is the plan. So unlike, unlike when we did, we have done other plans, there's been a major change to the code. There, there is not, that's not occurring here.
You're, with both items that are being requested? These are two minor additions to the ordinance, if you will? I mean, you still have to amend it. This still has to go to the board. But at the end of the day, they still need to resubmit a master plan. And then you have to again approve how everything is allotted in that plan because everything's going to shuffle slightly. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and we are already getting a lot more tax dollars. So that, you know, that's not to be ignored.
So from a plan of, from a, from a true planning perspective, if this fire protection fee is something that you'd like to investigate, you could potentially do it for all of patent township. Do a square footage or a building height or something like that and adopt it for the whole township, not specifically the Toftrees. So that if you had a larger piece of development come in, a larger structure or just a large something, a large building, that you could offset the cost for emergency services in that type of a fashion. But do it for the whole township. Don't make it specific to a property.
Correct, then it's more of a logistical approach.
Yeah, and I think it gets back to, you know, kind of what I was saying is then you have, you know, some type of quantitative number that it's tied to, not just throwing a number out there where people can anticipate and expect it when they're planning something going forward. That was my whole thing is to have some type of quantitative number versus just throwing some type of number there that we, you know, just put on a piece of paper. So, and plus, I think like you just said, Leslie, the fact that they have to come back and resubmit the master plan, that's time. More time, more pricing going up. That, I mean, that's just my whole thing on, on, on my view.
Okay, any other discussion? Do we have anything else, Leslie?
I'm, I'm going to just go through item two.
Yeah.
And chat about all of this collectively. So I did a ton of research on the history of Toftrees, which was really, it was very interesting. So starting off in 1966, there was a set of landscape architects that did a master plan design for what was called the Heim-Guomo Track. And it, it was, it was essentially Toftrees East. It was the original Toftrees. And that was proposed to have 3,612 residential dwelling units on it at a 60 units per acre density, which is pretty insane. But, you know, this was a while ago and this is when planning and a whole different situation in site were, were really ideal. So this was going to maximize open space and it was just a very, very different look from what we know Toftrees as today. In 1983, there was an additional tract that was purchased, the Bull Tract, which we know as a Toftrees West today. That added an additional 2,065 units to the mix, okay? In 1986, there was a master plan that merged the Heim-Guomo Tract, the original Toftrees, and the Bull Tract, Toftrees West, together for a total of 5,677 residential units. That was mostly, I think that was a mix of residential, commercial, and a town center at that point. In 2008, there was a change in ownership and parties that were involved and such. And so there was a new master plan that was submitted that reduced the residential units and it added more commercial. So for that 1,200 acre property, there was now 4,690 residential dwelling units, which is the number that's in the Toftrees ordinance, with an average of six units to the acre, max of 15 units to the acre. In 2014 and in 2017, the master plan was amended. There was no change to density. They were just moving residential units from one parcel to another. So what is being requested is now an additional 50 units to Toftrees for residential units. The current density, and I have the calculations in your agenda packet if you want to follow along because I'm throwing a lot of numbers at you. At 4,690 units, the current that's allowed in the ordinance, it's 3.79 units per acre. If you add the additional 50, it would make it 3.83 units per acre. It's not a significant increase. And compared to what the original density and the original residential units, it's negligible. Again, making it simple and timeless, staff is recommending that instead of associating anything with any specific property, knowing that Toftrees has to submit a master plan to reallocate all of these uses and all of these, how everything is laid out, we are requesting a very minimal, we're changing the number and that's all. So you'll see that on page one in the zoning ordinance.
Thanks for all the great details.
You know what's interesting, Doug might notice, but Phil Sieg told me back when that Toftrees was the first planned community in Pennsylvania. Is that accurate, Doug? I don't even know.
Yeah, it even preceded, now, yeah, that's what I was told.
Yeah, that's what I was told, yeah.
According to Tom Currie within, in the area at the time. So, and it even, the, the Miss Palace Planning Code now has a section about PRDs. But this plan community didn't even perceive anything in the MPC. So, yeah. So it's fair, it's, it's, it's a unique set of regulations I can't find anywhere else in the state. And then over time, we used to have one set of regs for three master, three planned communities. But over time, we've made changes to Gray, Gray Woods and created a separate set of regulations for that. And then Toftrees has its own set of regulations. And then Oakwood, which was built out a few years ago, it has, it's still under these, it's the, what was then the original regulations. We've, we've used it, I think, pretty well to create communities we think are pretty nice.
Yeah, very.
I agree.
Leslie, any more discussion?
Um, I, I think the changes are minimal and.
Planning Commission and online, anyone have any other comments? If not, do we have a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve item one, to increase the building height from 50 to 75. And I will make a motion as well to increase the unit density from 4,690 to 4,740.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Question first.
Uh, hang on, go ahead.
Are we approving the ordinance as written with the non-residential or mixed use outside of town center? Are we dropping the fire thing or what?
We assume he recommended he was making a motion based on what was provided in the agenda materials. So the answer to your specific question would be yes.
The other thing on the fire thing, I'll still, still talk to staff. We, we don't run away from anything. So I heard the comments and so I wanted to give my viewpoint. So even if you move it on to the supervisors, I'll, I'll still address it with the, with the staff because I think it's a fair, I just, that's just how I operate. I don't go away and say, well, you know, I'd rather just chat with these guys about it.
Before we vote on this motion, I, let's put back on the table the mixed use. So, Planning Commission, how are we feeling about that?
Well, I already, I think it, it already has kind of a mixed use, that whole development. So I, I don't understand what the problem is, is just continuing forward with that.
Because it opens up other areas in Toftrees West or even Toftrees East to go above 50 foot to 75 foot.
Oh, so, so that means each project wouldn't, that, that, that would be a 75 foot height total across, across the board, no matter what project it was?
No, no.
Could be, potentially could be.
No, within the town center, we're limited to 60 feet. That's the whole town center. And it would have to be a, a non-residential. There'd be no residential that would go to that height. That's, that's, that's different. And I should let you guys address that, but.
Well, plus the 150 feet is for front, rear, and side setbacks.
Correct.
You have to meet all those criteria.
Yes, yeah, that's huge.
So it would have to be a much larger parcel. It would have to be a much larger parcel and it would be specific to all.
Yeah, that 150 feet really limits what we're, can be, a big time.
That goes back to my first point. Drop the mixed use.
Well, if we want to do something according to, somewhat according to Robert's Rules of Order, you would, you would say, I'd like to move, I'd like to move to amend the original motion to remove mixed use from the change in the height. And then we'd see if there's a second to your motion to amend. And then we'd go back to the original, original motioner and see if he's accepting of that. So is that your motion?
Any more discussion?
My question is, isn't it mixed use already? The whole, the Toftrees development in general? I mean, we've got, we've got the medical offices in there. We've got restaurants in there. We've got residential. We've got the.
Yeah, there's.
The door.
Yeah, there are differing building heights based on the use, Sharon. So apartment buildings can go up to 60 feet high. Within the, within the town center, you can go 60 feet. Before this change, outside the town center for a non-residential or mixed use building, you can go 50 feet. Town homes can go 45 feet and most of the rest. So it, it kind of depends on the use. So there's no, there's no one certain height, but it depends on the use and whether you're inside or outside of the town center. Which, town center is the part in the western Toftrees West where they're building the Medical Center Building.
Correct. Okay.
At this point, you're looking for a second to Jim's motion.
I'm looking for a second to Jim's motion. Do we have a second to Jim's motion in reference to the mixed use?
No second, then the motion fails.
If there's no second, then we'll go back to the primary motion. Do we have, do we have a second? Oh, no, now we're, we're ready to.
We had a second. So now, yeah.
You already had a motion and a second.
So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay?
Nay.
So moved.
Bob, how did you vote? Bob, Mr. Prozek?
Bob, were you a yea or nay?
I was a nay.
Well, that's a three to two, so that vote fails.
Yeah.
No, there's no recommendation at this point. So you need, you need four. Just to clarify, you need four ayes.
Correct.
Yeah.
But I, I think in the essence of just moving something along, I don't know if it's that big of a deal. Developer, would you, do you, would you rather?
So we can, someone can make a motion to amend the language further. If you want to just pull out a section, but the ordinance is what.
If you want to move something forward to the board for their approval, you'll need to find something that at least four members of the, of the planning commission can agree on. Let me put it that way.
All right.
Because otherwise, the board's not going to, if, if, if the planning commission can't agree on a recommendation to go forward, the board will reject it also.
Correct.
So if you want to move something forward that the board has a positive recommendation on.
Okay, do we have another motion that's worded differently?
I make a motion to change the wording in the ordinance from non-residential or mixed use outside of town center, blah, 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 to 75 feet. Drop the mixed use and only say non-residential outside of town center. And also for the time being, drop the fire protection fee.
Do we have a second to that motion? Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those, any nays?
Nay.
One nay. So moved.
So you voted aye?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh yeah, that was a four to one vote on that, okay.
Very good. All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Well, so we need a motion on item two, then, the increased density. Somebody want to make a motion regarding that?
I will make a motion on item two to increase the density of the units from 4,690 to 4,740 units.
Second. And we have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? So moved. All right.
Boy, that's the most math I've done since fifteen subjects ever.
Item number five, college township pedestrian facilities master plan.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to start out. So the Gray Woods Partnership submitted a subdivision and land development plan for the Gray's Point neighborhood. It's Phase 7A. It consists of 36 single family lots and two common open space lots. And it extends public streets, Amicus Way, Phoebe Road, and Gray's Woods Boulevard. The plan set is included in your agenda packet. In addition, there's also a letter from the developer requesting a waiver. They are requesting a waiver for an increase of the 5% grade within 100 feet of an intersection. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Michael Pratt from Keller Engineering, who's the engineer on the project.
Good evening, everybody. This will be the fifth section or portion of the Gray's Point neighborhood in Gray's Woods. I have the key plan sheet four. And hard to read because there's a lot of information on it. But to everyone, everybody, Gray's Woods Boulevard, in this area was 6A, 6B, C and D. So we've been focused here since 2018. Phase 7A is here, flanking a proposed street Buckmoth Way, which connects Phoebe Road with Gray's Woods Boulevard. And the proposal is 36 additional single family lots. The lots and unit types are similar to the single family lots that were proposed during the last phase, 6D, along Phoebe Road. The street consists of two 12-foot lanes flanked by an 8-foot parking lane. Where on-street parking is present and there's overflow parking in this area of Phoebe, two spaces. And in this area of Amicus Way, there are three spaces. Yeah, you'd have to turn, let's turn to sheet six of the site plan. So Gray's Woods Boulevard, Buckmoth Way, Amicus Way that connects from pre- Amicus Way that connects from previous phases here, and on-street parking is proposed there, three overflow stalls. The parking requirements for the full phase are 72, 36 times two per, um, lot, that's met on lot, in the form of a two-car wide driveway and a two-car garage for each unit, plus six additional for the overflow parking. Stormwater management is proposed to be continued use of basin 6A, which is in this area that was installed about 10 years ago, uh, with some minor modifications, uh, to allow for this phase of development. Utilities are all present in the prior phases, mostly coming through Amicus, Graysewoods Boulevard, and Phoebe, sewer, water, gas, and electric. The area of phase, by the way, is about eight acres. Uh, five acres of that is in the form of lots, about two and a half acres of additional right-of-way, and about 3,500 square feet of additional common open space. Landscaping proposes 98 street trees in this phase, and we have sheet 13 and 14 to show everybody the landscape plan. Um, consisting of those type of, uh, plantings, which are Japanese okra, um, hackberry, paperbark maple, and, uh, Japanese lilac, which have been set up in consultation with your arborist, uh, to meet your requirements. And I just wanna touch on the, the overall density of Graysewoods, where, where the, the big picture is in the master plan, just a reminder, the total master plan is 600 acres, uh, the total allowable density is three units per acre, about 802 units. 497 of those were set aside and surrendered with the phase eight, nine, 10 transfer to the township, so 1,497 units are eligible. Uh, with the approval of this phase, 36 additional single-family lots, that would bring us to a total of 558 units of that 1,497, or about 37% of the development. Permits include erosion and sedimentation control plan approval and MPDS permit, and that permit is under review by DEP now. I just wanna touch on one other aspect of this proposal, we're requesting a waiver from the board, and I wanted to brief you on, uh, the requirements of that. And that pertains to, uh, sheet six, please.
I was looking for the profile.
Well, just wanted to just describe the challenges you had, Michael, and the discussions we went about.
Basically, uh, the master plan shows a connection of Buckmoth Way with Graysewoods Boulevard, preferred by the township for a variety of reasons. The vertical differential between those two points is about 15 feet, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it's in about 180 feet of distance, which means it's very steep. Uh, there are other criteria in the ordinance that we have to observe. One is maximum allowable grades, which typically are about 8%. We can go to 10% for short distances. A second component is site distance, when you have curves, you have to see over that curve, that's a 200-foot requirement. And the third is to flatten that grade to about 5% within 100 feet of intersections. Um, basically, so cars can slow properly in stop conditions, particularly in ice. We couldn't achieve all three of that criteria and connect it, um, without placing additional fill in this area, which then places additional fill over State College Borough Water Authority's existing 16-inch water main, and that, they would not permit. So we were stuck, we consulted with staff, this took quite a while, had to go back and forth to pick the, the best option to achieve all goals, the primary goal of maintaining the connection. And that turned out to be a request to consider a reduction of that, uh, landing, that 5% landing from 100 feet to 70 feet. We were able to achieve it in 70 feet, um, and still meet all the other criteria, the site distance, the maximum allowable grade of 8%, the connection itself. To support that, we did an analysis of the safety in era, in, in reducing that to 70 feet. We conclude that a, a sufficient stopping s- distance, even in adverse conditions, is about 50 feet. So we offered that to the township for consideration, requesting a grant of waiver to meet the objectives, uh, of connection.
And all those criteria have been discussed extensively with Alan Man, she's, she's in agreement.
Yes.
So, so the core reason why this waiver had to happen is because of State College Water Authority with the setup that they needed for what they need to do at that intersection.
Uh, I, I would say there's five reasons, there's four in your ordinance, your requirements, and they're there for a reason. Uh, the fifth is a desire to make that connection and keep that connection, and then, I guess, State College Borough Water Authority's position is, is sixth.
Right.
And they're, they're all equally balanced, everybody had a valid point of view. We looked at every single one, including disconnecting that roadway, that was not deemed to be favorable. We approached the, the Water Authority with a request to place additional fill, we looked at lowering sidewalks, this took about nine months, basically, um, and arrived at this solution in consultation with staff, which we think is a, a pretty decent one to meet all the objectives.
Okay.
So, so, at the end of the day, it's gonna be 5% at 100, 5% at 100 feet.
5% within 70 feet of the intersection.
70 feet, right.
8% for a very short distance, and the rest of it's vertical curves to tie into the rest of the road, so less than 8%.
The requirement was 5% for 100 feet.
Right, right.
So we're going down to 5% for 70 feet.
But it's not that steep, it's not like if it were black eye, I'm trying to think of road conditions that would prevent stopping, but it's not that steep.
It's still safe, Michael, so we did go back through, the 100 feet is, is not an absolute minimum, so they did the safety analysis and found that it's still meets all the safety criteria that we have to, we have to abide by.
And, and plus, I would assume the speed limit's not 65 miles an hour.
I, it's 25.
Right.
So that means people go 35.
Correct. Right.
Any more, any more discussion on the, on this?
Does that take into consideration school buses on icy roads, because we do have, you know, about five or six significant...
We need all the required safety criteria, so...
Okay.
Well, a, a, an icy road at 2% might not, you might not be able to stop the bus, Karen, Sharon, so we don't, we don't design for every extreme that could possibly come about. There are a set of safety criteria that are published by, uh, most of them are in...
ASHTO.
An organization called ASHTO.
Yeah.
Um, that we have to meet those regulations to maintain our liability, uh, not to increase our liability. So that's, that's what everything is designed to, we don't design to extreme circumstances, so...
Oh, and that, that design criteria is for an average driver, it's, it's kind of interesting if you read the requirements, they make a distinction between proficient and average drivers, so that says I could stop in that distance, and that, that's really what it means, somebody who's not...
But these are nationally accepted standards.
Yes.
That all municipalities, uh, require that, that we get designed to, and...
And I think unless standards change, I think that if, if someone lives within a mile of the school, I don't, I don't believe under the current circumstances, in most cases, they provide busing. I think, you know, like for, uh, the elementary school, if students would be going there, I believe it's a mile, because there's some kids that live not too far from you, Jim, that I think are, are right at that threshold of walking to Park Forest Elementary and Park Forest Mill. So my point, Michael, is, they go down north of Lane to get there, and my point is, that's, now...
That's a extreme road, it sounds like.
I don't teach math anymore, but, uh, I think it's a little more severe than what we're discussing.
Yep.
That's my point there.
Michael, uh, switching gear, any more on that, guys? That Paton Crossing, you know, they made great use of the, um, of water retention areas, one of them, I guess, is gonna be some sort of a field, like a soccer field or something. Um, are, are we doing anything creative with this water retention, or is that...
Not as creative as that, but, um, stormwater management basin number six in the development is a combined rate and volume control basin, which means the bottom portion of it is flat, of course, in grass, to provide for stormwater capture, a certain volume during every storm event infiltration, the balance of it for rate control and fast out slow, so it slows the stormwater. Um, you know, perhaps not as artistically creative as what you're referring to.
Where is that, is that behind here, uh?
Yeah, uh, back to the sheet on this.
And what, my next question is, how do we get to that area? There is open space behind here, correct?
No, it's in that open space, it, it wasn't designed for pedestrian use.
Is there a break in the sidewalk to take you back there?
Uh, there will be along Graysewoods Boulevard, the basin is right here, Graysewoods Boulevard with sidewalk when extended will parallel it, and you could walk down in it, it's, it's a three to one, it's malleable.
My question is, we have, uh, one, two, three, there's about six, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, four, five, six, there's 16 homes in a row. So is there any way to get behind these houses without having to walk all down, all 16?
Yeah, I understand your question, could I have site...
There's a break in here, it looks like there's a...
Sheet five, yeah, you're pointing at a gap, and it is right here, which was intentionally left in throughout the entire development so that people could walk...
Perfect.
Uh, from neighborhood section to neighborhood section, as it were.
Yeah.
Good.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Uh, any other questions, Planning Commission? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, uh, to, uh, allow the waiver of, of, uh, to the, to the 5% within 100, uh, to...
To 70.
To the 70 with an 8% grade.
Second?
A waiver as offered.
Second?
You recommended approving the waiver as it was offered.
We, we have a, we have a second, all those in favor?
And, and conditionally approved the plan.
Yeah.
Aye.
We have a first and a second, do we, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? So moved.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you. Item number six, uh, status report on pending items.
Uh, the only thing that I was made aware of is to provide you an, with an update from the attainable affordable housing study. The center county is hoping to have that wrapped up and have a final plan from the consultant on December 1st. The commissioners are planning to review it, and it's going, if it's adopted, it will be available for public, for the public after that. Um, so, the hope is that the county could be invited to a future Planning Commission meeting to give you all an update and report conclusions that were made from that plan, so that will probably occur in the new year.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Leslie. Any other business? If none, then, uh, meeting adjourned.